Then let's call the school board meeting of ISD 361 to order. Roll call, Mike Holden.
Here.
Michelle Hebner?
Here.
Tony Corpey?
Here.
Jennifer Windows? Jen?
Here.
Here.
Ted Saxon here, Terry Murray?
Here.
Roxanne Scholes Deedich? Kevin Grover?
Here.
Ella By Jeffries, student representative?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Mike and a second by Michelle. Kevin, do you have anything to add to this?
I just want to make a couple of things noted, and I think it's been changed here, but just so everyone's aware. Number 10 under the consent agenda had an error. Alicia Hendrickson is hired as an assistant girls track coach. And then there were two more volunteer coaches added. Other than that, everything, I believe, should be as presented.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on the agenda? One thing I would add, it's not really an agenda thing, but it's the truth and taxation meetings, so no matter what, we have to stick around till six to start. And we have to start that at six o'clock. That'd be the only other thing I'd really add. All right, we have a motion by Mike and a second by Michelle. We'll do a roll call vote. Mike Holden?
Yes.
Michelle Hebner?
Yes.
Tony Corpey?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Ted Saxon, yes? Terry Murray?
Yes.
Carries unanimously, six zero. Moving on to open forum, presentation of Elks December Students of the Month. Holden Sutherland and Emma Erickson.
Hi, everyone. Happy holidays. Hope everyone has a safe and happy holiday season. We will start with Emma Erickson. Emma Erickson is the Elks December Female Student of the Month. Emma is a remarkable student who strives for only the best for herself, both in the classroom and in her extracurricular activities. She has challenged herself academically with both honors and concurrent enrollment classes here at Falls High School. Emma has been on the principal's list and also received the Academic Excellence Award for the past three years. Outside of the classroom, she is the Secretary of Minnesota Honor Society and Vice President of FHS Student Council. Emma has also been a three-sport athlete in swimming, hockey, and track and field, starting back in seventh grade. When not being actively involved at school, she volunteers for numerous activities in the community to include the Bronco 5K, Turkey Trot, Elementary Track Meet, Hockey Camps, Baking Groceries, Activities at St. Thomas Aquinas, and activities for MHS and Student Council. Emma currently works multiple jobs to include being a certified USA Hockey Official, lifeguard and swimming instructor, works for Carlson's Auto, and also the family business Erickson Lawn Care. She is planning to attend the University of Minnesota Duluth in the fall to pursue a computer science degree. Emma Erickson, the Elks December Female Student of the Month.
All right, Holden.
Holden Sutherland is the Elks December Male Student of the Month. Holden is an exceptional student in our school and community. He has challenged himself academically, taking both honors and concurrent enrollment classes here at Falls High School. Holden has been on the principal's list throughout his high school career. He is a member of Minnesota Honor Society and FHS Student Council. Along with maintaining excellent grades in the classroom, Holden has been very involved in soccer in Canada and has also been a part of the robotics team here at FHS. Outside of the classroom, he has been involved in the community volunteering for roadside cleanup in honor of his grandmother and service opportunities through both MHS and Student Council. Next year Holden plans to attend a college or university to study electrical engineering with a focus on robotics. Holden Sutherland, the Elks December Male Student of the Month. Thank you.
Excellent. Is anybody here to speak for public open forum? Would anybody like to address the council, her council? That's gonna be Mike's. Would anybody like to address the board? No, okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Mike and a second by Jen. Does anybody need any clarification on any of the consent agenda items? Do you have anything you'd like to add, Kevin?
No, I think we're good.
Okay. Moving on, we'll do a roll call vote then. Mike Holden?
Yes.
Michelle Hebner?
Yes.
Tony Corpey?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Ted Saxon, yes? Terry Murray?
Yes.
It carries unanimously, six zero. Moving on to action item number one, resolution of acceptance of gifts and donations. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
All right. Resolution for acceptance of gifts or donations. Whereas School Board Policy 706 establishes the guidelines for acceptance of gifts or donations to the district. Whereas the International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district. Whereas Statute 465.03 states the school board may accept a gift, grant, or device of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved, the School Board of International Falls Public Schools, ISD number 361, accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations, or grants received by the school district. PCA Safety Process Bucks for gun safety training, $240. PCA Mill of International Falls for FES Book Vending Machine, $4,500. Track Boosters for Track Event Tent, $1,502.92. Arena Scoreboard Sponsorships, PCA Mill of International Falls, $2,000. Shannon's Inc., $500. Falls Lumber Company, $1,000. MidCo, $500. Washke Family GM Center, $500. Rainy River Medical Center, $500. Border State Bank, $1,000. Football Boosters for Assistant Football Coach, $2,000. Falls Public Library Journalism Class for Advertising in Ink, $50. I've got a motion by Michelle at this point. I'll entertain a second.
So moved.
Was that Jen, maybe? Okay, motion by Michelle, second by Jen. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mike Holden?
Yes.
Michelle Hebner?
Yes.
Tony Corpey?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Ted Saxon, yes? Terry Murray?
Yes.
It carries unanimously. Thank you for all the donations. Moving on to action item number two. Set School Board Organizational Meeting from Monday, January 4th at 5:00 PM. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Tony? Do I have a second? Jen, you're the only one who's gonna be there.
Second.
I got a motion by Tony and a second by Jen. Further discussion?
And I just picked, you know, that is the first Monday, the law or whatever says the first Monday or is applicable or it's not applicable. But if that isn't a good time, I mean, we can do a different time date. You know, we will need to seat our new board members and then go through the normal from who's gonna be chair and different positions, as well as committees and, you know, the normal stuff setting our attorney and bank and this and that. So, you know, it's same old, same old, but if the first Monday, January 4th is not good, we can do a different time. I just picked it, you know, and we're back in session, so I thought it was good.
It's fine for me, Jen, Tony. Fine for you guys?
I'm good.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect.
Yep, works for me.
Okay. Well, then we've got a motion to set the School Board Organizational Meeting for Monday, January 4th at 5:00 PM. A motion by Tony, a second by Jen. Hearing no further discussion, we'll do a roll call vote. Mike Holden?
Yes.
Michelle Hebner?
Yes.
Tony Corpey?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Ted Saxon, yes? Terry Murray?
Yes.
Carries unanimously, six zero. Action item number three, accept fiscal year 21 general fund revised revenue budget in amount of $13,595,259. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Michelle and a second by Mike. Further discussion? Anything? Okay. Hearing no further discussion, we'll do a roll call vote. Mike Holden?
Yes.
Michelle Hebner?
Yes.
Tony Corpey?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Ted Saxon, yes? Terry Murray?
Yes.
Carries unanimously, six zero. Moving on to action item number four, accept food service fund O2 revised revenue budget in the amount of $365,413. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion by Jen?
I'll second.
And a second by Tony. Any further discussion on this one? Okay. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mike Holden?
Yes.
Michelle Hebner?
Yes.
Tony Corpey?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Ted Saxon, yes? Terry Murray?
Yes.
It carries unanimously, six zero. Moving on to action item number five, accept community education revised revenue budget in the amount of[805.68][806.00]$368,571, sorry, I did not say that right. $368,571. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion by Jen. Do I have a second? I mean, sorry, Michelle. Do I have a second?
That's okay.
I'll second.
And a second by Tony. Any further discussion on this?
Nope.
Okay. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mike Holden?
Yes.
Michelle Hebner?
Yes.
Tony Corpey?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Ted Saxon, yes? Terry Murray?
Yes.
It carries unanimously. Moving on to administrative reports, committee reports, Student Council. I saw Ella on here earlier. Oh, yeah, she's still here. Are you still around, Ella?
Yes, I am. So, first of all, we were able to do a virtual summit meeting with at least one representative from 53 schools around Minnesota. So that was really cool to be a part of, since we weren't able to do any of our in-person division meetings. We did a food drive November 10th through the 20th, and we raised 190 pounds of food, which is about double what we usually raise for food drives. And we finished our pie sales not too long ago, and we combined that with MHS this year, and we sold 650 pies. And then November 30th through December 4th, this is probably my favorite thing we've done recently. We did a clothing drive, and our donations were about triple from last year, and they completely filled a truck. So that was really cool to be able to distribute through the community. We are gonna be starting doing monthly competitions that people can do at home. So there are gonna be competitions like, we're doing a baking challenge for Christmas, and we're gonna do an orange juice and toothpaste challenge. So just fun little things like that, so people are on break, and we're connecting virtually that we can still kind of connect with other people. We have already started planning Winter Sports Week, which is gonna be February 8th through the 13th. So it's a little, we're planning more ahead of time than we usually do, but that is okay. And we also just created new social media accounts for Student Council, so people can stay more up to date on everything we have going on. So, yeah, that's what I have for you guys.
Thank you so much. All right. Moving on to Melissa Tate, elementary principal? Is she on? I don't see her. Kevin, do you have anything?
I don't have anything for Missy if she's not on.
That's fine. Tim?
I have Tim's report. As far as enrollment, 551 currently down four from this time last year. Looks like down three from a month ago. Not a whole lot on here. Mr. Eversen did do a survey of staff, mainly again around the discussion we had in that, I think it was a working session with regards to, you know, PPE, feeling safe, what else could be done. Tom Holt has been around with, I think it was last Wednesday, and has Plexiglas for those that want and found out where they want it installed, and hopefully it comes in. I don't know what the lead time is on how much or how long it's gonna take, I should say, but that will get in place. And we'll talk more a little bit about some of the stuff coming up here in my report. Other than that, teachers are continuing to connect with, you know, students and parents in trying to get those that are struggling moving in a little better direction, but things are going well according to Mr. Eversen. And wish everyone a good break, safe break, and see everyone back in the new year.
Thank you. Moving on then to Kevin Grover, Superintendent?
Okay, several things. First of all, if you've kept up, you know, the governor obviously did another executive order a week ago or roughly a week ago, a little less than a week ago. Some of the things do affect us, and I'm, and again, not gonna say good, bad, or different. We're obviously in person at the elementary and in person in a hybrid fashion at the high school. So we can continue as long as, you know, we feel safe and numbers continue to stay lower and things are, you know, going as they are. There are some changes that will come up as we approach that January 18th timeframe, and some of it sooner. I was on a webinar today. They're gonna have voluntary saliva testing every two weeks for staff. Don't know when it'll start for us since we're in person, but anywhere from the, you know, first week that we're back to the second week, somewhere in there. We will roll out saliva testing for those that are willing and want it. Similar to the Volt, it's run by Volt, but similar if anyone, any of our staff did the saliva test that they were given earlier. But that'll happen every two weeks to try and, you know, catch people that are asymptomatic, so to speak. So that, you know, is a safety piece that's good. It is gonna require, as we get further along to that 18th, where staff have to wear the face mask along with a shield. It's gonna be mandatory that all staff wear both while with kids. You know, if you're in your office or room by yourself, that's a different story. But when any staff is out and about, we're gonna have to have both on. So, not saying everyone that I've talked to is necessarily happy about that, because things seem to be working, you know, at least for us. But that's the rules, we'll play by the rules. And there's a few other things that will change, but I don't foresee in talking with Tim and Missy, a whole lot changing. There's a little bit, again, there's still pieces coming together. You know, most of our specialties in the elementary have been going to, you know, music. You go to music library, you go to library. There is gonna be a little more restriction with that, where they're gonna be coming to the classroom, which I'm not saying we agree with, and maybe it'll change a little bit before we get there, but the only downside to that is the teachers lose out. You know, that's their prep time, and to have the kids, you know, in their room, it's a downside, but we'll see where it goes. But overall, I don't know if many of you are watching our webpage and watch the daily updates as far as our COVID numbers. They're, you know, as good as they've been. Again, any COVID cases are too many, or kids that are out are too many. But if you look over the last roughly month or so that we've been doing it, it's about as good as we've been. Hopefully, we can have a safe holiday season, and when we come back, they're in a similar place or lower would be obviously awesome. But, so, any questions on, I'm just gonna say COVID right now, or anything? I just have a few other things. Any board members have any questions? Jen? Did you?
I just want, I wanted to say thanks for putting that information out. I hope, I hope people find it's helpful. The graphs are easier to look at than numbers, especially if you don't remember what happened the last couple of days. So thanks for doing that. How are, so, you know, there were some concerns brought up by staff as numbers were rising. How, and you may not be able to, you know, with the principals not present, you may not be able to comment, but how has that changed? How are staff feeling now? Are you hearing anything different? What are their major concerns? I know you did the survey and are putting in Plexiglas. But have you heard any?
I'll be honest, I don't, I personally haven't heard, you know, I mean, there's still, I'm just gonna be honest. There's still people on all sides of the, you know, subjects and, you know, staff, and I'm gonna say students, are for the most part doing what they need to. There are still some that feel, hey, we should be in distance learning right now, you know, and I don't know how you change that. But I do think most, and again, that's my opinion, most are appreciative of, you know, things that are being offered up. And I think are maybe, you know, just, it is what it is, and kind of settling in that we're in person right now or we're in a hybrid, and that's the way it's gonna be. You know, they, they need to do what they can, you know, keep in their bubble in their classroom and do what they can. But, and, yeah, they're, they're still tired. There's, there's a lot going on, you know, as far as contacting kids, contacting families. You know, there's still discussion on, you know, how many are gonna, you know, maybe not pass, or where are we at? And, you know, some of that is still, well, needs to still be being talked about. But I guess, other than that, I don't have a lot more, Jen, as far as, you know, that it's 100% better or anything like that. Does that make sense, or?
Yeah. I'd be really surprised if you said it was 100% better.
I know, I mean.
That's good. That's great.
Okay, just a few. We'll see where things go. The questions come up on, and I think it's worth waiting to bring up. But a couple of people have asked, like, the advertisements in the arena. Are we gonna look at doing anything different? I mean, many of them, even on the donations tonight, you see that they've donated or advertised. You know, if we have a very short season, should we look at doing something? You know, I've never been in this boat, obviously, you know. Those advertisements are strictly a year-to-year advertisement, you know, you pay 500 bucks or you pay a thousand bucks, you know, for either on the scoreboard or in ICE. Even if we do have a season, how many people are gonna get to see those? You know, and I just think it's maybe something we should talk about at some point. I'm not saying tonight, but should we look at doing something, you know? Because like I say, it's meant to be an advertisement, you know. I assume we're gonna get some hockey games at some point, and they may be televised, but it's still not the same of having 500 people many times, you know, in that arena and seeing, you know, seeing the advertisements on the Zamboni. You won't see that on, you know, when it's televised, they'll be on TV breaks or whatever. So I think it's something we should just at least get in the back of our mind. Many of them are advertising. There's a few that have just said, no, we can't this year because we're having a tough struggle, and I understand that. But for those that are, whether we do, you know, two years for the price of one or, or something, I think we need to think about it. And I haven't reached out to what any other districts are doing, but I just wanted to throw that out there to think about. The other piece that I am looking for a little bit of advice on, because it's time to, time to go this route, and I hate to even bring it up, but it's been five years. And if you recall, for our property and liability insurance, we get, you know, annual renewals. And, but about every five years, we go out. In fact, we were supposed to go out last year, and if you recall, we did open it up, and it turned into kind of a mess where there was a lot of competition from local as well as out-of-town people. And some group locked up a lot of the companies and this and that. And so we just stayed with our agent. Again, they go out and look for the best rates. But we need to look at doing this again this year and rolling it out. And I'll be honest, I don't have a real good way to do this. You know, there, there's some places, well, MSBA recommends going out and doing a bid for an agent. Not, not go on rates, but do, you know, like an RFP to get your broker, I guess is the word. And then, because most of the brokers can go out and access the majority of the companies, you know, out there. And so it really shouldn't matter, I'm not gonna use an insurance company, but, you know, company A, if you had three brokers, they should all go, be able to, you know, present your data and your loss, your claims, things like that, and get you a comparable number. My problem is, you know, can we come up with a fair, consistent way to analyze brokers, you know, without dollar values, because you're gonna have, I'm guessing, three local companies bid it, as well as several from out of town, you know? And, and, well, you could get a large one from out of town that's probably the largest insurer of school districts. How do you compare that to, you know, where with True Insure right now? You know, and, or Tim Anderson, you know, years back, did a good job. True Insure's done a good job. Bremer, you know, has bid in last, I think, couple of times. I'm just struggling on how we do that. You know, that's, like I say, what some do, but I don't know how many get, you know, the locals like we do, you know, to bid it. And that means something, at least it does to me, but on the other hand, you know, someone that insures more schools, I think, maybe, you know, has a benefit as well. You know, they know cybersecurity, what, you know, what should we have, you know, they're more up on what. So I guess I'm just asking for board kind of objective look.
I think it seems weird to pick our favorite person, based on that they're our favorite, you know, like, that's kind of strange about the a competitive, like you said, a dollar amount bid. I don't know, if we have an idea on who kind of locked up the system a little bit too, that's a possibility of saying, hey, do you mind?
Well, I, I have an opinion, but I don't have fact to say that, you know? And, I mean, Stacy and I talked a little bit about, is there a way to, you know, you pick, you know, come in and kind of sign up, kind of like a bid walkthrough, like a lot of, when we did construction projects, if you were gonna bid, you came into a bid, pre-bid meeting, you know, and have them write one or two companies that they're gonna work with. I don't know if that's fair either, you know, because, you know, as a broker, you wanna go out and shop the market with our data and get who you think is best, you know, it's, go ahead.
So the, the broker RFPs that I've looked at, and I don't know if MSBA sent any to you, but basically what you do for the, you're looking for the professional services. So that some of the criteria in those RFPs for broker services are years of service representative of your industry, which Kevin is getting at is the schools. You're gonna get those, you know, years of service in the industry. Those, you know, years of service in the industry, the number of schools that you are servicing. Your knowledge of the school district industry and stuff like that is, is really what you're grading your broker on.
Does it make sense to just do the same process as we did last year and hope that same thing doesn't repeat itself?
No, no, I don't think it does, I think that's why Kevin and I are struggling.
I think it's strong because someone locked it up and whether they actually turned in a bid or not, you, you, you know, I, I don't know and, and several. I mean, several groups were very frustrated, you know, as far as that goes, you could, you know, and again, you could have an outside. And I'm not saying local deserves it or doesn't, it's been nice to have a local agent because it's obviously some money in town, but on the flip side. You could have someone out of Texas maybe lock two-thirds of them up. And now what do we do? We can reject all, but I'm not gonna say I reject just because they're out of Texas, you know, I mean, we gotta look at what's best for the district. You know.
It, it's looking at what's best for the district, the other thing is, kinda so you can understand the process is, a broker. Works for us, so we hire the broker. And the broker works for us and then they go out to all the different agencies and get the best pricing. Whereas the way we do it now is we throw it out onto the market that we've got a bid open and every agent who wants to bid. Starts locking up all the insurance agencies, so nobody else can get that bid.
Whereas, so for instance, like, um, and I'm just picking Liberty Mutual, you know. If an agent goes to Liberty Mutual with our, you know, our info and says, you know. Agent says, I want, you know, a, a bid or a price on insurance, they won't give it to anyone else, but. You might have three in town that can go to Liberty Mutual, you see what I'm saying, that's what happens, is it's the first come, first served type deal. And so last go around, someone locked up numerous, you know, and did they give us the best? I would think they did. Cause I mean, if I was bidding it, I'm not gonna give the, you know, highest one I found, but then there are quite a few that, or several that couldn't bid then. And were not happy with us, but like I say, there's nothing to say a local group, you know, can do that or couldn't do, you know, or. Um, could or couldn't, and so we're, I mean, we're just struggling because I don't want Ted, I don't want the mess we had last time, but yet. The soups I've talked to, um, some have never had the issue, you know, they've done what we've did and then. More probably do the broker, but I'm just being honest with you, the RFP for a broker. I'm a little concerned on, you, you know, what criteria and grading, you know what I'm saying, because, um. Can you truly put local counts, you, you know, it should mean something, but it's not the end-all be-all. You know, just like we've said, if we were, you know, buying a vehicle and it costs us ten thousand more to get it locally. Unfortunately, we wouldn't stay local for that, that's just too much of a, you know what I'm saying? Uh, too much of a difference, but we've been very fortunate vehicles to be able to get, I think, most of them local. But just as an example, you know, that's, and so that's the struggle is if we go that route. Again, I don't wanna be the only one looking at them, because. You know how it is, it's school pictures or insurance are probably the two things that kind of been the. Most, uh, I don't wanna say frustrating, but, you know, most controversial as far as business side of things.
So when you talk to the other school districts, do, is there like a commonality between agents that people use? Say it's Liberty Mutual or something like that, are, are there a lot of school districts that use the same provider or not?
Well, yes and no, I mean, there's, there's, um, I think Marsh, which we've done some work with, not for our property. I think they're the biggest provider for school districts in the state. Um, I, I, don't quote me on this, but I think they have a hundred and fifty-three districts, you know, I mean, that's their specialty. They, they were one that kinda got locked out last go around, not saying that's right or wrong, but again, they'll go out. What, um, you know, and shop the market, they can get the majority, um, then there's a, several that are like us, at least in northern Minnesota. That, you know, just have an independent agent, so to speak, haven't asked how many have, you know, Liberty Mutual or. Mutual of Omaha or, yeah, you know, I haven't got into that conversation, because even with Marsh, they have schools with many different. You know, companies, because, you know, like our, um, you know, our work comp, you know, might be with, you know.
The, the, the issue is there's, there's only so many companies that deal with school districts. The liability issue, it's, it's a niche market, and so there's, there's fewer and fewer that will insure. Schools, which makes that whole process of going out to bid even harder, because all of those agents who want the business. Have that many less to go out to business with, so the property and liability is, you know, again, it's, the question is. Going with the broker. Is picking, is about picking the person who can professionally provide you with the service and industry knowledge. About your insurance, it's very difficult for me to look at our insurance policies and know what we're not covered.
Right, so do you try somebody like Marsh then, just because they do have a majority of school districts and just directly go to them? So is that a, is that a broker, Marsh?
That's a broker, right, so the, the RFP gets your broker and then your broker, we could still say. In the end, even if we used a broker, we could still stay with the same insurance company if they gave the lowest bid. The, the difficult part is. You're, you know. It's gonna take us in a different direction.
Well, it may or may not, I mean, odds are, and I'm just gonna be honest with you, as we've thought about it. I think Marsh or there, there, there is another fairly big, um, broker that represents quite a few schools. You know, if they had interest, I would have a hard time, I mean, I just think if you look at their qualifications. They're probably gonna rise and again. True Insurance has been good to work with, we, you know, there's no complaints there, but. It's gonna be hard to rate them, I think, as high, you know, on what, because these people work with schools, they know, you, you know, and they just. I think when you put it on paper, just thinking ahead of time, they're gonna rise up compared to our local people. You know, and that's where we're struggling, you know, now, and I'm just throwing it out there. Similarly, like our, our, uh, legal team, we go with someone that specializes in schools. You know, and, and again, there's numerous within the state, but there aren't that many, you know, and I'm just gonna use Shimon for instance. They've never approached a school, but, you know, they kinda specialize in certain things, and so, you know, we, we used to be with Clasimo years back. That's pretty much all they defend is schools, for some reason we went away and, and now we're with, um. Oh, I just went mind blocked. Ratwick, Jennifer Lee's the main one we work with, but Ratwick, they specialize in schools, you know, so we have never really questioned it. Because it makes sense and, you know, of course, insurance, as long as I've been around, we've had. For the most part, a local agent and it's just the way it's been. But, uh, it's.
Yeah, we've only been locally the last few years, for the most part, we were with Baller, a long time with Baller.
But that was still represented, like with Tim Anderson or someone, wasn't it?
No, no.
Well, I guess, well, as long as I've been, it's probably twelve years or something like that.
Was, is Baller, um, a broker or is that just an insurance agent?
There would be a insurance company.
So do you go back and just like, is there anything stopping you from just going to just say, pick a couple of insurance people that you've used in the past? And, and getting a quote from them personally, can you do that or not?
No. No, cause they, you gotta bid it.
It's because the value's gonna be hanging up.
Yeah, you, so you either have to get a bro, you either have to go with the broker and find somebody who can professionally represent you and go all to the. There's only like ten companies that will ensure schools, because. Just are the swimming pools, the amusement, the field trips, the, um, liability, the legal liability, the school board member, you know, all of that. Simple niches, the automobile, I mean, that's just simply automobile policy. There's arenas, swimming pools, things like that.
Well, can we bring up more about what other districts are putting in their RFP and just copy whatever we like the best?
Oh, I mean, we can come up with an RFP, that's not an issue, we have examples, it's just, I, I'm being honest enough front and I wanna make sure the board is on. Board if we go this route.
Well, we'll open it up to, we'll open it up to everybody, I mean, we're gonna follow the legal bidding process, so it'll be up to every local agent, just the same as it is. Every national one, so, there's nothing wrong, I don't feel anything wrong with going with an RFP, like what you're saying, but just.
Well, it, I think it kinda sounds like you need to pick a broker though, is what you're.
But that's what the RFP will be, the RFP will be, be for a broker, but what I'm, I just want it very clear that, um. It may not, you know, you know, and again, it may end up with a company from out of town, are we okay with that? Because like I say, um, you, you know, if you specialize in schools, I think your document is gonna look. You know, again, not saying those others aren't experts in insurance, it's just, you know.
The RFP for a broker is gonna go, the, the main criteria for that broker is going to be school experience and the number. That's.
Well, I wouldn't try somebody like Marsh then and go with them, just because it sounds like they do kinda have the lion's share of the business.
Well, they would, they would bid on the broker services, it would be Marsh, there's just a handful.
Right.
But I'm guessing, you know, Bremer could, they could bid, you know, True Insure can bid, but it's just, you know.
They can, yes, they can all bid, but the criteria you're gonna use is gonna be. Heavy on school experience and school knowledge of school.
You know, the way it went last time, I guess I think that is a positive way to go, I'm not gonna say it's gonna be easy or anything like that. But I don't know how else to avoid the mess we had last time, you know, a year ago now roughly, where some group or some. Someone went out and locked the majority up and, you know, others, we might not have got the best rate, cause there was a few that never even got their bid in then. You know.
The other pieces is it takes hours of my time, so going with a broker, not to be selfish, I guess, I'm not advocating one way or the other. But in terms of time and effort, the broker's gonna handle the process. Whereas I had to fill out, I spent hours filling out paperwork for every.
Well, I think your time is at a premium these days as it is, so if you can get a broker that actually deals with us on a day-to-day basis to be the most efficient. And get what we need, then I would go that way.
Yeah, it's, yeah, every insurance agent has a different form and there, there are pages and pages of forms that take a lot of time.
Can I prove your RFP at the next school board meeting, or do you need this to be done?
No, no, that, that, that'll work, I think, we'll, we'll get stuff out, um, I just wanted to make sure we were on board somewhat. Um, and the last, the last thing I have, unless anyone else has comments on that. Um, I wish we were all in the same room, but i- i- it is our, I guess, our time to, um, thank. The three members that are departing and I, I personally sincerely, um, wish Michelle, Mike and Terry. The best, um, I, I truly appreciate, um, the working relationship I feel we've all had and the board has had. Um, Michelle's been, um, on the board, I think fourteen years, um, it's remarkable, incredible, I think. You've done a lot, I'm gonna say, when I was on both sides of the table and I truly appreciate, um, the help you've given me. Um, as well as the districts and I'm gonna say students and families of the district. Um, Mike, the, the, the same thing, um, eight years, uh, I'm gonna say came on in kind of a tougher time when things were not. I'm gonna say it's amicable, maybe, uh, among the board, and not that we don't agree and disagree on things, but I think your leadership and. In my opinion, getting the, the ship going in a, in a positive direction, um, I'll forever be grateful. And, and Terry, the same thing, coming on with your experience and, um, being dedicated to the students and staff. And, and families of the district, um, truly appreciate it, and so, um, I thank you and thank you on behalf of the district. And I guess my only, um, caveat is I would like to have a, a cake sometime and, and invite you back. When we can honestly all be in the same room and shake hands and, uh. Go, go with that, so, um, on behalf, district as well as myself, thank you very much, I truly appreciate it. And I guess I would, and Ted, I've just thrown it up, if any, any of them wanna say anything, I'm done, I don't have anything else. Um, but I don't know if you guys have any comments, or if Ted wants that somewhere else, I just think it's appropriate.
Yeah, do you guys have any closing, final words? I mean, you got a, a couple of committee reports, yeah.
Wow, um. I'm gonna hold Kevin to the getting together when we can all get together.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Yep, and, yeah, uh, wow, it's hard to believe it's been a whole fourteen years. And thinking back when I, I did just start being on the school board and to now, you know, it's. It seems like it's a, a million years ago, things have changed a lot in, in the time that I've been on. And, uh, I also appreciate the time I've had with everybody and it's been quite the experience. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Michelle.
I don't have anything else, Mike or Terry, unless, I, I mean.
Well, I'd like to say, you know, when I got on the school board, uh, things are pretty wild, really. We had six board members and there was a lot of three-three voting. Came in and started working with Michelle and, uh, she had already had a leadership, she, uh. Had been chairman several times and took the bull by the horns and she went through probably. Some real tough early, uh, years, um, and then we. Together and with, uh, and then Terry coming in to help, uh, and the rest, uh, we made it so that it's not. You got seven board members, you finish your voting, um, and don't always agree all the time, but you don't. Really, uh, throw rocks or whatever either, so, um, I, I totally enjoyed being on the school board. I liked working for the school, uh, I liked working for the teachers, uh, parents and maintenance people and, uh. You'd walk down the hallways and you could visit with those people and it, it was fun and, uh, I'm gonna miss it, I really am, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
I don't have much to say, I was only on for four years, so, uh, I'm not as, I won't be as lengthy, uh. But I remember, I know Michelle's been on so long, I was, uh, in high school when she was there. No, I, I enjoyed working with everybody and, uh, uh, I was pretty in awe on how professional everybody is and. How well the school is run, um, I just wanna thank everybody for putting up with me for four years, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, and best of luck to Mike and Terry to continue to improve. Um, anybody else? Then they, uh, we still have, uh, committee reports on here for community ed advisory board. And you wanna take that or do one of the board members represent it? I don't know if they're reading right now.
Um, I can give a quick update, um. Uh, just to second the, the donation from Safety Patrol Bucks, uh, that'll go towards our firearm safety program. Uh, many thanks to those guys, um, the defensive driving classes, these are just things that you guys will probably get asked about, so just wanna cover them in case you are asked. About it out in public, uh, the defensive driving classes can't take place at the college due to the governor's announcement regarding COVID. Um, I called all the people that are on our list about their comfort doing Zoom sessions from their own homes and, uh, ninety percent said they're not comfortable. Um, and given that we can't have outsiders in our building to host a large Zoom gathering in lieu of in-person class, we are looking at, uh, options for January. Uh, for driver's training, uh, drivers that did hold a class via Zoom, we had eighteen young students, uh, obtained their blue cards. Um, a large mailing went out to our pals' families, um, so we will continue to engage them in distance physical material learning. For the coming months and probably for the foreseeable future on a monthly basis. Um, that stems from the results of some surveys that went out to families and, um, this is the learning and engagement environment. Um, that best meets them where they're comfortable. Uh, the pool is gonna remain closed, obviously, to outside, um. Um, families and, and community members, so the morning swimmers, um, hopefully they don't text and call you at six AM like they do me. Um, but they can't come in at the moment either because of the government's, governor's announcement. And then we've started to market, since we have the beautiful white stuff out on the ground now, we've started to market our skiing and. And then we've started to market, since we have the beautiful white stuff out on the ground now, we've started to market our skiing and uh, cross-country ski equipment. So otherwise, everybody have a Merry Christmas and and best of luck to the three board members. I wish we could have worked together a little bit longer and got to know you a little bit better under the COVID circumstances, but I appreciate everything you guys have done for me and my family in the year that we did get to spend with you guys and wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, Dan. Um, moving on to the rec commission, Terry, Mike, Tony?
I'm gonna let Terry do the talking because that was his final meeting on the rec commission and he, I just wanna say he's done a great job on there. Um, we'll let him handle it this time and he's going on to be a county commissioner, so he won't be sitting on the rec commission anymore. Um, but yeah, he he had a lot of, uh, a lot of goodness there on there, so. I'll let you handle it, Terry, getting a big head.
Um, I I just wanna say, everybody's glad to get rid of me on the rec board and they wanted Mike back, so they kept kept him on, cause on city council, but uh, there's not a lot that was going on right now because uh, there just isn't a lot going on. Uh, I don't know, Mike, can you think of, I don't know if there was anything big that came up, I.
Well, we we discussed about if if the school goes into uh, distance learning, um, that we decided as a group that we would uh, sit down in a special meeting as a rec mission and take advice and uh, uh, really look it over before we did any uh, making decisions on stuff. So uh, we we did discuss that, that was an important thing. Um, if the school did wind up uh, going into distance learning, of course, they're gonna make their call and and then we would uh, we decided as a group to have a special meeting so that we'd be open for discussion, so. That was probably the biggest thing in that last meeting. Yeah.
Okay, um, anybody have any questions about any of that, either of those reports? All right, um, well, then we're going to adjourn and we have.